Close Zoom.
Well, do you know how if you put your cursor right there?
Yeah.
Right there on the black?
Yeah.
Right click.
Task manager?
Task manager, yep.
Zoom.
It's gone.
Yeah, and kill them. You know how to just kill them. Click on them, kill them.
Candy Crush. I don't even play Candy Crush. There we go.
Right click.
My computer's telling me to play Candy Crush. I don't.
And task.
Yes.
What do I need?
You know, alternative, we could reboot.
She was saying, she said that she had to be in North Carolina for work, and that was going to be her mom's for Easter, so.
Zoom, 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 zoom. Yep. Plenty of time.
I was here in spirit. I was here in delayed pause.
Very delayed, like you were six times over the line.
I would say to Heather at P D, I could totally tell because I would say something and you'd all sit there. And then you'd be like, oh, she said yes. It was even one time where I was like, yes, and then Richard's like, I'm so impressed. I'm like, yes, I said yes.
Yeah, that's what I did.
He's like, so your parents are coming for Easter? And I was like, okay. She's like, well, your mom told me. Our mother is worried. And the next thing you know, I call my mom. My mom's like, good, it's a hard flight. I'm like, I'm like, when are you coming? When are you here? Come on, or stay maybe on my table.
We are going to wait a minute to officially start the meeting. Apologies for the.
Yeah, the owls are not fine.
We had a little bit of a technical difficulty, and I believe we'll have a couple of councilors joining us remotely. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Newburyport resident who recently passed away. And I'm going to quote here from the obituary. Aster Shepherd, who graced Market Square with her enchanting melodies and left an indelible mark on the hearts of all who had the privilege of hearing her play The Harp, passed away on March 15th, 2024. Born David Bishop, Aster courageously embraced her true identity, living authentically and fearlessly. A fellow musician was quoted in the Daily News as saying she was completely original, naturally talented, brilliant, and uncompromising in pursuit of artistic excellence. I'm sure many of us who might not have known her by name would remember her and her music from Market Square, where I know I personally saw her many times. So again, she passed away recently, and we'd like to extend our condolences to her sons, her family, and her friends. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do have two remote members.
Okay, so roll call for the city council meeting of March 25th, 2024. Councilor Preston.
Here.
Councilor Shan.
Here.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilor Wright.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilor Zee.
Here.
Councilor Dunneou.
Here.
Councilor Granis.
Here.
Councilor Harmon.
Here.
Councilor Khan.
Present.
Councilor Lane.
Here.
Thank you. Council McCauley.
Here.
And Council President Cameron.
Yes, here.
We have 11. Two remote, nine present.
Late files?
So we have three late files. One is Order 549, which is a handicap space on Auburn Street at High Street. Slated to go to PWNS, Public Works and Safety. Communication 546, which is extended employee parking in Green Street Lot. It's communication to go to PWNS. And Order 550, which is a gift acceptance of $800 to the Parks Alliance, from the Parks Alliance to DPS Parks Division to go to Budget and Finance.
Motion to waive the rules, accept the late files, and refer accordingly.
Second.
All right, we'll have a roll call.
Roll call and aforementioned motion. Councilor Preston.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Wright.
Yes.
Councilor Zee.
Yes.
Councilor Dunneou.
Yes.
Councilor Granis.
Yes.
Councilor Harmon.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Here.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council Cameron, thank you.
Yes.
Public comment, we will take, we at least have one or two names on the sign up sheet. And if anyone out in Zoom land has their hand up and is a Newburyport resident and wishes to speak to an item on the agenda for two minutes, please raise your hand there, and we'll call on you after the in-person public comment. First, Rita Mahalik.
My name is Rita Mahalik, 53 Warner Street, Park 219, Newburyport. My comments tonight are regard to handicap parking signage. Since this is on the agenda tonight, I thought I could voice my concern here. Especially for the new parking spaces for Auburn and High Streets. In accordance with the American Disabilities Act, a handicap reserve parking space, excuse me, let me start over. A handicap reserve parking pole sign is all that is, is all that the regulation requires in order to legally designate a handicap parking space. While all handicap parking spaces in Newburyport have the required pole sign, many of the spaces also have the ubiquitous symbol for the handicap painted on the pavement. That is the white wheelchair against the blue background, which we all know. But I've noticed that there are a few handicap parking spaces in the city where the pavement symbol is not present. Because handicap parking signage is so critical to promoting accessibility and compliance with parking regulations, it is important to adhere to one standard design policy for all handicap signage and apply that signage to each and every handicap parking space throughout the city. Lack of conformity leads to confusion, violations, and leaves public compliance at an unfair disadvantage. Either have a signage policy that includes handicap symbol pavement, and that includes the handicap pavement symbol, or don't, but don't have it both ways. I hope you can address that for the benefit of the disabled as well as the non-disabled community who are trying to find parking spaces legally in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jane Snow.
Evening. My name is Jane Snow. I'm Coffin Street. I have a thought or a question for you. Usually on the agenda, we had a section that said committee items, and that's where we would have the ad hoc for the broad school, we had the ad hoc for the park. And I'm wondering if as we go forward with the ad hoc for the zoning that's coming up, could we post information there? Because you all know the places to go to look for all the updates and things, but I sometimes think residents don't know all the specific spots. And for me, that would be great because you have the meetings every two weeks. People could see there was a meeting and then go searching, or they could see that the meeting was coming up. And we used that in the past. Everyone was wondering if we'd be considering using it for the zoning. I would appreciate that. I was a little concerned when I saw the application for the shanties because it's for an entire year. And, you know, the shanties were supposed to be moved before fall, before the cold weather, and there they stayed. And now they're looking to stay for eight, an entire year. And I don't know, I don't think that that was the intent of allowing it. It was supposed to be for people to apply, and I don't know of anyone else who's ever applied that could have a space for a year. So I would like you to kind of look at that and reconsider that. And I read with some happiness and some sadness the municipal building report. I was glad to see that we had some buildings, like the Community Center and the Library, that were in good stead. And we also have a list of about seven that need some real TLC ASAP. And so I know it's getting to be budget time, and I know we have a lot of projects. And I've asked you before, and I'm going to keep asking you, could the board, could the, sorry, the council please have a discussion amongst themselves about how we're going to address these, and where do they fit? And how much can we afford, and so forth and so on? And I know the city is absolutely fabulous at getting grants and things, but I'm concerned about this lovely building that was built in 1851, and also about the effect on the pocketbook of the residents. So if you would consider that, I again would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. That's it for public comment in person. Owen Smith, you have your hand raised, and I'm going to allow you to talk. You can unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening. Owen Smith.
Keep going, I just adjusted the volume. Should not have stopped him from talking. Owen. I think he must have done, that shouldn't have had any.
That owl is blinking. Oh, it just came back.
Run into the panelist for a minute.
Why not?
And he logged out, he had logged out before, so we'll just give him a chance to rejoin. Have a great internet connection, and co-hosting it all with me, adjusting the volume up higher. All right, we're going to give Mr. Smith another 10 seconds.
Is he back in attendees now?
No, he's not.
I want to open panels.
All right, Mr. Smith, I think you should submit whatever you wanted to say to us in writing, if you're trying to get back on.
There he is there now.
Whoops, I just allowed the wrong person to talk. I will get it, there we go. All right, Owen, unmute yourself and try again.
All right, can you hear me this far?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Hi, okay. Owen Smith, I live on 75th Street, I've known in Newburyport. The topic I'd like to discuss is the order regarding the installation of a crosswalk at Ale and Turkey Hill, approximately 55 feet north of the intersection. My main concern is the fact that the manual uniform traffic control devices, which is the power most standard on installations of safety, since it either states that 14 items need to be considered to determine whether the placement is appropriate. Placing crosswalks at locations that motorists don't expect create hazards to both motorists and pedestrians have created false sense of security to a pedestrian. Reviewing the packet, I did not see any supporting documentation to show the qualified person determining that installing a crosswalk at that location would be acceptable and in the public interest. And the city council directing the placement of crosswalks, I think, is beyond the scope of your charge. Placement of safety devices is the prerogative of the executive branch, which would probably be delegated to the Director of Public Works, or the Director of Public Services. And I would encourage the city council to discuss with the administration ways to improve crosswalk conditions in Newburyport and consider adopting a revised ordinance to address the placement of traffic control devices. The Massda has a sample on their website, and it does discuss how such decisions are delegated to an appropriate executive branch person. Thank you for my comments.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor's comment.
Good evening, everyone. Great to see you. Lots of great things to talk about tonight. First, rec center at 59 Low Street. I believe the next Community Services Committee meeting will be April 1st. We've had two great meetings so far. This third one, I believe, will focus more on the finances, since Ethan Manning's, we had trouble with his Zoom last time. I think we're also going to talk about some tweaks to the design, just to give you guys some more things to consider and look at. But again, this is, you know, the number one priority of the administration, and we really look forward to moving forward on this proposal. In the meantime, we are continuing to look for other funding sources for this project. Speaking of Recreation and Youth Services, they just received an award. I don't know if you saw it in the paper on Friday. They won the Community Impact Award for the Massachusetts Recreation and Park Association. Congratulations, N R Y S. That's really great that they were able to get that award. And they got it for continuing to be able to pivot as an organization and to grow their programming during the times that they've been homeless since October 2021, which is really great to see that hard work getting recognized. We have a new representative on the Whittier School Committee. That happened last week. I want to congratulate Mary Delai. Mary comes with a huge background in education, former superintendent of Wilmington Public Schools. Most recently, she's been at Watertown and Salem as Assistant Superintendent. But she just brings a lot of really wonderful skills, so we're excited for her to be representing Newburyport on that really important committee. Hydrant flushing, this isn't in here actually, but I'm just going to say hydrant flushing is coming up starting on April 1st. As you know, we start on the west end of town and then work our way through on this vitally important project or projects that help keep our water, water flowing here in the city. If you haven't signed up for alerts yet, you can do that right at the City of Newburyport website. But we'll be sending out things through DPS and the mayor's office throughout this to alert residents when we will be flushing the hydrants in their neighborhood. Community Preservation Committee finalized their recommendation for projects that will be coming your way in your next packet. Some really great projects in there, just under $1.5 million worth of projects this year. Lower Atkinson Common, safety project at Pioneer League was in there. Atkinson Common Rock Tower renovation, restoration, Knoc Tennis Courts, Woodman Basketball Court, Woodman Park, Central Waterfront Boardwalk Reconstruction Feasibility Study, so much more, so I look forward for that discussion around the CPC projects for this coming year. I had a meeting today up at St. Paul's Church around the resettlement partnership. I'm not going to say too much about this, but this, this group came together when the Afghan evacuees came to Newburyport a few years ago. There actually, most of them are now in housing around the area. The group was able to buy a duplex over at Amesbury. One family is already in, next one, next family will be in beginning of April. So a lot of good things happening there, so just, just to get that on your radar a little bit. We met today with Christina Aguilera, not the singer, but the Executive Director of the Office of Refugees and Immigrants. So we had a nice meeting with them today. Just wanted to get that on your radar. Forever Green is going to start up. That's the campaign that is run with the city and the chamber, and a lot of great local organizations. This is to encourage ecotourism in the community and sustainability. We'll be working with a variety of local and regional organizations that are working hard to reduce waste and increase awareness. This happens throughout the whole month of April, highlighted at the end with Thursday. So just there'll be a lot of events throughout the month, so just keep an eye on that. But I want to thank Molly Edinburgh and her team, and also the local partners for all their hard work on that. Newburyport Community Iftar is coming up Wednesday, April 3rd, at the high school in the cafeteria from 6:00 to 9:00. I want to thank the Human Rights Commission for putting this together as always. It's the 7th Annual Iftar to help celebrate Ramadan. It's always a great event, so I would love to see as many city councilors there as possible. We're doing a Transgender Day of Visibility flag raising on Saturday. The Newburyport Pride Group and the First Religious Society came to us for this, so we're going to a proclamation on Saturday morning in honor of this. This day is obviously to raise awareness for issues faced by the transgender community in honor of their contributions. Again, we'd love to see as many city, city employees there as we can, and I want to thank the Pride Group for bringing that forward. Lastly, the Public Library is doing a survey that they're asking for some feedback from the community. It's starting today. This, this mayor's update will be up on the website, but there's links on there for the survey. They're looking for feedback from residents. We're about to enter this strategic planning process with the library as well, so all this information will be great to get on, on hand for those, for these two surveys. These surveys are geared more towards kids. But again, if you want to help out, log on, and we'd love to hear from you. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to the mayor, for the mayor? Council Harmon?
Just a question on time for the flag raising on Saturday.
That is a great question, and I don't have it, but I've got it in my head, so I will, I will double check that, and I'll get that out.
Second question, I don't.
11:00 AM, sorry.
Thank you. The second question is just on the, skip to the section on streets and sidewalks. The, we're not doing State Street this year. I was wondering if that means something else is being pulled into the fiscal year?
No, I think we're going to stay with what, what we were doing for this year, and I didn't speak to that, but National Grid came back and they want to do a little bit more work on State Street, and it's pretty much from that Prince Place up State Street towards High. So that work's not going to happen until September with parklets and everything else. And we want to let that settle after the trenches are filled in from the National Grid work, so we're hoping to do State Street next year. But there wasn't plans to bring, bring on any, any other streets at this time. A lot of that, some of that funding was coming directly from National Grid, so we'll probably look and see what, what we have, and if there's some flexibility to add a street or not, but there might not be enough there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilor Donahue?
Thank you, President. As far as the funding that you mentioned, that you're still seeking additional funding sources for Low Street, I'm going to just be a broken record. Are we looking at ARPA at all for consideration?
Sure, I mean, I think we're looking at all. I mean, I think right now the outside sources that we're looking at for funding are more from the local community groups, you know, particularly the banks and there's a couple of foundations that we're targeting. We actually have another thing that I'm going to tease a little bit. We might have some really great information coming down the road here from another organization, but that's primarily what we're focused on. ARPA, we really only have so much left, so again, we'll certainly consider that. But we've also got that money targeted for a few other projects that would actually complete projects opposed to just contributing, you know, contributing to one large project.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right, have a great meeting.
Thank you.
And that leads us to the consent agenda.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for March 11th. There are four communications. They're all going to license and permits, their applications. Flag Day Race, June 15th. Spring Fest, Saturday, May 25th, and Sunday, the 26th. The Car Show, Thursday, August 8th, and Fall Festival, Saturday, October 12th and October 13th, Sunday. There are two transfers. Transfer 186, Harbor Master retained earnings, $25,000, to Harbor Master Equipment, same amount. And transfer 187, Police MIS Communication, $6,005, to Assessment Center, same amount, both going to Budget and Finance. There's one appointment, 482, Bob O'Reilly, 12, Riverview Drive to the Conservation Commission until 5/1/2027. That's to go to Planning and Development. Following items are coming out of the respective committees. Budget Finance Transfer 184, Order 543. General Government Communication 542. License and Permits, just two items. Application 187, the Basin Tent on Water Street, and Application 188, the Newburyport Arts Shanties Pop-Up Park. Then Planning and Development has a reappointment, Joe Copper, 8 Fruit Street, to the Local Store District in 415, 2027. There's a Communication 545, zoning, so-called zag. Then Public Works and Safety has Appointment 481, David J. Vance, 10 Pleasant View Ave, Mirmack as a special police officer. And then there's Order 542, Crosswalk on Turkey Hill at Hale Street, and Communication 539, Mirmack Valley Transit Authority Memo and Map. That's the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
He didn't read that one. So approve as amended.
Yes, so to be clear, Application 186 is not coming out.
All right, so that would be removed from the consent agenda to keep it in committee.
Correct.
Sorry, thank you.
Councilor Zed moved and.
I second.
All those in favor, roll call.
Can we add in receiving file of the mayor's update?
So done.
Second. Great.
Okay, so receiving file mail's update as amended consent agenda. Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zed?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
It's a regular agenda.
I think that brings us to, believe it or not, orders.
Yes.
Yes.
And we have, the first order is a gift acceptance, $4,500, City Improvement Society.
Motion to refer 547 and another gift acceptance from the same, 548 to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Just one small scribbler is on 548, the gift, the total gift is $5181.60. I think it was just a transcription error. The $1681 is not the correct amount. It's in the body of the, just for everybody to be on the same page, the total gift on 548 is $5,181.60.
That's $5,181.60.
60 cents.
60 cents, thank you. So motion made to refer both to Budget and Finance. Would that corrected? And the second was Councilor McCauley. Discussion. Okay, roll call.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zed?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron?
Yes, thank you.
No ordinances, so going to committee items, Budget and Finance.
Motion to collectively approve Transfer 184, City Clerk, General Free Cash, General Fund Free Cash, 15K to Elections, and Order 543 Gift Acceptance Friends of Newburyport Trees, $6,500.
Second.
So I'll just do these together. Committee met on March 14th and discussed both of them, so take you on a little bit of a story on the Elections one and then talk to you about the trees. So the current balance, the reason this transfer is coming forward is the current balance is running in a deficit. It's a combination of a couple of things, but the current balance in the account's about 23K negative or in the red. There is some, there's money always moving in this account because in certain cases we do get reimbursed either in whole or in part, depending on the nature of the election. By way of example, Whittier will be reimbursing the city approximately $11,200 and change for the January special election, which is obviously as expected. And the clerk did note that they have been quick and easy to work with on that reimbursement. However, with timing, you know, you're running in the negative, then we had the presidential primary after that. And one interesting thing, we spent a good bit of time talking about in committee, is that there is some level of refund that gets done from the state with the new adage, the new advent, I will, of like early voting and things like that. But it comes through the state auditor's office, and what we could gather in committee is it's actually not necessarily statutory, so we don't always know exactly what we're going to get reimbursed for and when, though it has been generally positive of late, whether that will continue. So we didn't have an immediate answer, you know, what will we exactly be refunded for, reimbursed, I should say, pardon me, in the future. But we do expect to get, for example, an $8,000 reimbursement for the presidential primary, however, not on any specific timeline, so at some nondescript point in the future. So, long story short, as we're in the red, this 15K specifically will bring us out of the red with some reimbursements factored in to about $2,000 positive. And so the clerk in particular and the finance director said that they were comfortable with the amount. Remember, we're trying to essentially get to July 1 when the new fiscal year rolls over, and then we start this conversation all over again with a new line item. And so they were comfortable, it would bring us into the positive. If something gets held up with reimbursement, for example, then it's possible that there could be a supplementary transfer needed before the close of the year to keep this account from closing out in the red since there wouldn't be a sufficient balance elsewhere in the category to cover it. And the last point of discussion, just because it was learning, I think, for the committee, and I want to pass it on, was just the calculation of reimbursements when it comes to the state reimbursing us for things like early voting is a tabulation of costs by the clerk's office. They keep track of the hours and the poll workers and things like that, and they submit. And then through some magic of some kind, they determine a reimbursement amount. Sounds a lot like the Chapter 70 formula that nobody understands, so something along those lines. And, but again, and that's through the auditor's office, but generally has been favorable. So anyways, these are elections, the committee felt that, obviously, there's a reason for them, and so it was brought to you three to zero to approve. 543 is a gift acceptance, $6,500. This is your, basically your standard spring tree gift acceptance that we're always appreciative for. 12 trees, planting, care and watering for two years. Know the locations precisely have not been selected yet, but they are selected in conjunction and in coordination with the Tree Commission, so they will do that. We have a former expert tree commissioner, I'm sure could weigh in more on that process, but that was a story, and we didn't feel like holding it up for the specific location. So $6,500 was brought to you three to zero, and that's the story on these two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, so motion to collectively approve Transfer 184 and Order 543. Roll call.
Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zed?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
So just to close out on budget, we will meet on our regular schedule on Thursday. I just want to notice you that we did have a lengthy conversation committee about the school cameras, but we did not come to a conclusion. That's why it did not come out. The continuation of that conversation will be on Thursday. That is committee of the whole, so I encourage you to check the minutes, the recording, and/or join in on Thursday if you are available and you are interested. I want to say that in conversation with the administration, ARPA committee has not been scheduled to meet yet on the Lower Atkinson, so I don't expect that to be discussed again on Thursday, so plan on that if you're interested. That's also committee of the whole. On Thursday, though, we will also take up the Harbor Master seasonal dock fees that are in there and some of the other gifts that we have. And then CPA will be coming in next meeting, so I'm hoping to turn those in a couple of meetings. So I'll be emailing it. Those are usually committee of the whole, so I'll be emailing all of you so you can have them on your calendar if you're so interested in joining. And that's it for budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Community Services, Councilor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, sorry. No problems, I'm getting old. Nothing coming out of committee tonight. Just want to remind everybody, we are discussing Order 537, which is the 59 Low Street project on Monday, April 1st, 5:00 to 6:30 here in Council Chambers. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we are really going to focus on debt capacity. Finance Director Ethan Manning is in person this time, so he'll be here to help us through that discussion. I have had some discussion with Special Products Manager Turner that there are, again, as the mayor suggested, some tweaks to design that there, the administration is also going to be presenting to us. And then lastly, I'll just say that Director Manning did send me a new set of slides today. I've asked him to post them to the event. There's just a couple of updates to the slides that you've all already seen, so just make sure to look at those before you come. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilor Preston. For General Government, I want to make a motion to approve Communication 542. Oh, excuse me, to receive and file, sorry.
Second.
Thank you. So we met earlier tonight as general government. We're also joined by Councilors Zed and Wright. And we're given a presentation by Molly Ettenborough and Andrew Levine, both of whom are available if we have any questions. So we did approve three to zero to make it a receive and file. So this is the second year of this building's report. The ordinance, I think, was passed originally in 2020, and it does look at building conditions in general, and I think you've seen the 16 or so pages. And this, there's also specifically mentioned in the ordinance several aspects related to energy efficiency, you know, water and other utilities, electrical, carbon footprint. And so it's a pretty fair report. Molly uses the Green Communities Report and then kind of, which I believe is an annual submission to the state in December, and then modifies that for the needs of this particular municipal buildings report. We are, we have met our target of a 20% reduction in energy usage since we became a green community many moons ago. And it does tie into a degree. We asked some questions about the capital improvement plan. We asked about year-to-year comparisons, and also about the Harbor Master facility, which sounds like it's a, there's potential for solar there. And we are also, I think, as part of a state mandate, going to be creating a carbon reduction plan. So again, we voted to receive and file. I did mention of a comment Councilor McCauley had made to me. There are security cameras mentioned in the bullet points under several of the buildings. And we have an ordinance on the books from 2008 or '09 that any, any security type or surveillance camera, I forget what the exact verbiage is, that's in a public area, again, not necessarily like watching, you know, inside a building for intruders at night. But this was particularly back then in Street and Market Square, there were going to be some cameras, and the council approved them and passed this ordinance that we might want to get a list of any cameras that would fit in the definition of public space and get a list of the ones that are interior. And if the council needs to approve them, which we've not done, we could take a look at that if there are some that are more on the public side, but just to have a policy on security cameras in general. And obviously, there's also been some conversation in Budget and Finance about the schools' security cameras, so it relates a little bit to that. But anyway, that's a bit of a side note, but we did approve to receive and file three to zero. Any discussion? There was a second, I presume?
Yes, there was.
Okay. We'll have a roll call.
Roll call on receiving and filing Communication 542. Councilor Preston?
Yes.
Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zed?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
One other mention, we did have a discussion of Order 544. This is the change in polling location for 1P, which would be moved to the Church on Purchase Street. We had a good discussion with the councilors, committee members, and Councilor Zed and Wright also being a part of that discussion. And we'll continue that till the next general government on April 8th at 5:30. We'd encourage input, and Councilor Zed's going to get a message out to his email list just to get some feedback from residents on the Newburyport side of Plum Island about that. And we talked a little bit about the pros and cons in that boathouse that's, that we own, that is leased to the Coast Guard Auxiliary, that it is falling into some degree of disrepair, and, you know, looking at the options for a secure polling place that would be easily accessible to the public out there. Councilor Zed's going to follow up on a couple of points of information, at least a couple with the clerk. And again, we'll meet as general government on the 8th to discuss it, and again, hopefully have a little bit more input from residents. And that's the general government report. Okay, moving on to license and permits, Councilor Wright?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to propose a motion to approve Application 187.
Second.
Thank you. So this is an application for the Basin Apparel Company. They have, they've asked to be able to put up a pop-up tent in two locations on their property. It's on the, it's on Water Street, and it goes towards the park. They'll have a pop-up tent on the Water Street side and a pop-up tent on the side that leads to the parking lot. They did have the pop-up tent last year on the Water Street location. It's a 10-foot by 10-foot tent, but there's 21 feet of sidewalk there, so there's a significant amount of room for people to maneuver around that. They also want to do the same thing on the grass side heading towards the parking lot there. Again, it's a 10 by 10 tent that they'll put up and remove on each day, that they put that up there. So we discussed this in committee, and it was recommended for approval three to zero.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
Approving Application 187. Councilor Preston? Councilor Shan?
Yes.
Councilor Wright?
Yes.
Councilor Zed?
Yes.
Councilor Donahue?
Yes.
Councilor Granis?
Yes.
Councilor Harmon?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yes.
Councilor Lane?
Yes.
Councilor McCauley?
Yes.
And Councilor Cameron?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Application 188. Sorry? This is for the Newburyport Arts and Culture Shanties. We had quite a lengthy discussion in regard to the shanties. There was conversation about the timeliness of the previous approval, which was, you know, required that the shanties be removed. They haven't been, obviously, they've still stayed in place. They've still stayed in place. There was an amendment made to the application, which is, which is agreed to by the applicant, but amongst the committee, to, to not have this be a year-round approval, to have it end on 9/30 of this year, so that, so that, number one, it would coincide with the expiration of the insurance binder that was provided, and number two, to provide the, the council with another opportunity to evaluate the, the use of the shanties and the, and the long-term plan for what they plan to do with them at the end of the, of the, of the 9/30 timeframe. Among the things considered, discussed was the impact that the shanties would have on the view corridors that we worked on, and also on how it'll impact the, the waterfront park as far as that's, will be closed, will be completed and, and the impact that that might have on the park. So, we, we voted to approve that as amended out of Committee 3 to 0.
Thank you. Discussion, Counselor Zied?
I just want to ask a question first. Was any fee discussed for utilization of, of the space? I don't believe anything has been charged in the past. I don't see anything here, but did that conversation come up? And could you just give me the contours around that?
So, to the chair?
To the chair, please.
And we'll, just to say, we also, we do have John Moynihan on as an attendee if anyone wants to direct anything to him.
We did have a conversation around a fee schedule for, for the use of the, of the facility. The director of, of the firehouse, you know, noted to us that they're a, you know, that they're a nonprofit and they have limited resources, that they, you know, they, they're hoping that we would continue to allow them to use the space without a fee through, through September.
Okay. Counselor Zied?
Yeah, so, thank you, and I'm glad that it at least came up in conversation. I'm going to oppose this. I think I mentioned this on the way in, but the, you know, temporary is a famous word, I think, and it's, it's just getting on and on, and I think it's becoming institutionalized, which was always my concern. And I think, you know, we have a $6 million-ish park that we're building, and we've been trying to talk about, you know, potential for utilization for the purposes of revenue, frankly, to help support the park and so forth. And so, maybe this is the highest and best use of, of the pop-up park, but, but just doing it ad hoc doesn't mean we ever really had that conversation, or we know that that's true. If we want to use something and give it away for free, that's, that's something we do all the time, but I think doing it conscientiously makes a lot of sense. We just have had long conversations about parklets, and are we even covering the cost there? We have tents that we just passed, and we have conversations about that. We have outdoor dining for, so it's okay to do these things. To me, it's just not okay to just sort of back into it and single-source it, if you will. So, if we're looking at the pop-up park as being a long-term, free-floating programming opportunity, then we would want to really, in my opinion, A, decide that in a formal way, and then B, throw it out there and see what kind of proposals we'd get, like, say, the 2024 season's available, does anybody want it? And at what, you know, at what price? Or maybe we set a price, and we say this is what, that's very prime real estate. And to me, one key difference between, say, a parklet or a tent is that those are attached to something. There's a, there's a real estate behind it. In this case, that's very valuable waterfront space. It's public space, too, very, very much public space. And so, I'm just missing that part of the conversation, and I would just remind everybody that, how quickly we forget, the shanties have been controversial since they started. They, they showed up, and then, you know, then we had pushback, then they were supposed to go, then we, then they, remember, they left to an undisclosed property owned by a known landowner, and then they came back. And so, it's just been like this since we started, and we keep saying, we'll figure it out, and let's look at it holistically, and all the things you hear, when? I mean, so I think, I admire the committee as always, trying to like find some middle ground here, but I'm hoping that I'm just sending the message that we should formalize this. This is what we want to do fine, but let's, let's at least have an honest kind of discourse about it and then come to that conclusion more formally, instead of basically going to do what's 1,000 mini leases to make up, you know, a 99-year lease, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Khan, and Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, it does seem like when the shanties come up, we are kind of getting into a conversation on the use of them in that space. I was on license and permits last year, and do remember, we were probably more in the, the kind of the, the crux of the issue, which was really on the management, the, the use of the space, and then the proper, I don't want to say disposal, but where to, to take them out. And I will tell you a couple of things that crossed my mind. When I first came into it, there was the whole concept of, of, you know, the movement staying in another location, which was not where it is right now, not the pop-up park location, but almost more kind of, folks remember, almost by the custom house or somewhere in that green lawn. I do think that one of the things to step back and think about, one is the value added in that pop-up spot, and the, the kind of promotion of artists, which, so I think there's a lot of good benefits. I do hear my colleague here on the council about if there is an expectation, a time period of their, kind of their use, then that does probably need to be understood better. And while I will not be opposing this, I do think that it's a bigger conversation on the use of the pop-up park. And right now, I don't think we've quite formalized how the park gets kind of decided, and I do think we've made some really good decisions here when we looked at the public art policy and that we created here. I do think this one also possibly warrants kind of sitting together. Unfortunately, you know, what's the vehicle to do that? So, perhaps maybe a communication that can start this and get this maybe somewhat thought about from a policy perspective. But I do want to kind of encourage everyone that there are so many benefits that have been offered by having the shanties in place. They are, I think, better-looking than what some of the other things have been in that pop-up area. And there has been, and I haven't checked lately, but the, the kind of the preference or having local artists really be promoted and using this space, and there is that value there. So, I do hope we can pass this to that tonight and then work on that other piece that has been raised. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I am going to support this compromise. I'm the one who offered it here, but it, it did have a twist, and it does take the counselor's previous point in, in motion. The request is for the firehouse to actually come with, come back to us with a plan and giving them six months or so to be able to do that. You know, it is prime real estate. We would expect, if for prime real estate, we expect them to be managed seven days a week, not two days a week, maybe if it doesn't rain, you know, that kind of scenarios along the way. As was stated earlier, we, we have fits and starts as to whether it's successful or not. If we put measuring criteria of gross revenue and things like that, it's a failure. However, we are promoting local artists along the way. Most of that is anecdotal. There's not a lot of tracking that goes along there, simply from the nature of what it is. So, part of this is to be realist as to where we are in the timeframe of the year. You know, yes, we could, we could move to reject it 100%. They would still struggle to get the shanties out of where they are somewhere else. We thought six months was a worthy time that we've all spoken through along the way, but I think we made it clear that we're looking for something more, something more of a plan, something more of how these, how, you know, these five sheds are somehow going to transform into some value-added benefit on the waterfront. And that's not for us as an opinion, but that's really for the applicant to come to us and tell us how these, how the proposal is going to fit and to grow going forward in the future. So, for this particular compromise, I am going to support it, but like my colleague from Ward 1, there is a finite distance of where my patience goes with this, and so I yield from that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment, discussion? All right. Hearing none, roll call? Roll call on approving 188 with the amendment of good until September 30th, 2024. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
No.
Counselor Dunne you?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Application 186 is the application we removed from the consent agenda, so that's going to remain in committee. I'd like to invite the applicant. There may have been a communication error with, between us and them, but they didn't come to the hearing, so I'd like to invite them to attend the April 3 meeting of licensing and permits, and we'll take it up then if they're available. The, it's, it's not something they're planning to do until the 9th of May, so we, we have time for that. And as I mentioned, we will have a number of items to, to deal with at our next meeting on April 3rd. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Counselor Shan, planning and development?
Thank you. So, motion to approve Appointment 480, Joe Harper with Bridge Street Local Restore Commission.
Second.
So, the committee had the opportunity here for Mr. Harper, who is, came here with a license, and he thought, so much of the report that the historical aspects and how we admire keeping our downtown the way it is, as the Bridge Street Local Restore Commission requires one person on there to be a resident of Bridge Street. He is one of those members, so he has so much desire to continue on the committee, his love of the neighborhood, and obviously his love to the report. So, the committee voted to reappoint Mr. Harper to the Restore, Local Restore Commission for the street.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, roll call? Roll call on Appointment 480. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne you?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Shan?
Motion to receive and file Communication 545, and then the zoning advisory board.
Second.
Just a direct report came to our committee meeting to discuss the zag, which the document lists who are on the committee. He stated that it will be meeting every Thursday here on hours from 4:30 to 6:00, I believe is the time. This first meeting, this upcoming week, is going to be regarding the current 40 hour district. That's, my intention is to make sure that we have the, your study communication P and D right now, 5:40, that we'll use as a placeholder during the board for all discussions about the E and T A committees. So, this one specifically, we need to continue keeping it a committee, so we'll always have the opportunity to discuss the E and T A discussions in P and D going forward, using the 5:40 communication as the placeholder. So, with that, we offer to vote 3 to 0, which proceeds by Communication 545.
Thank you. Discussion, Counselor Zied?
Thank you. I just want to continue to drop my breadcrumbs, as I've been doing about my malcontent, discontent with this process. I just want to say to my colleagues that, and to the public comment that was made earlier, this is not a, this is not a committee of the city council. It's not an ad hoc of the city council. It's not a standing committee of the city council. So, I personally, for example, would object to using the city council's packet as a vehicle for this. I understand the desire to communicate, but communicate from whom? And I will just tell you that the boundaries between the legislative and executive branches, to me anyways, are sacred and very important and should be protected. And it's, there isn't an appetite, I think, to have a city council-driven effort here, and, and there are five councils on this, I get it. One thing, for example, that's interesting is, this is the committee, but are they going to vote? And, and if they vote, who votes on the committee? And to whom do they, what do they vote on? So, it's not, it's, you know, what happens when it's a, a committee of the administration is they're typically considered advisory to the executive branch. They're not even considered advisory to the city council. So, I get it. This is an esoteric argument. People don't like these like narrow procedural arguments, but, you know, I live personally, I love the charter, I like the rules, they're important to me. In previous councils that I've been on, the tighter we've turned corners on this kind of thing, the better outcomes we've had. So, folks should understand that while it may be done with the best of intentions, who are they advising and how? With an ad hoc, you say five, oftentimes there's another four to five members on there that are typically selected. They don't get votes. The five counselors vote, with the concept being you're driving for 5-0, so that when you come to the floor, you need, you know, X number of votes to complete something along the way. So, I'm just going to keep saying it. I'll probably be done now, because I don't expect anything to come to a vote here again, but I'm, I'm just saying it's, it's foundationally incorrect, and I've, you know, we have TSAC and EAC and a variety of other committees. They're advisory to the administration, not advisory to the city council. So, I've said my piece as many times as I can, and I will yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on receiving and file? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I, I just have to speak up, because having been on the council as, you know, I don't know, six now years, but we've done different types of groups to discuss various aspects that have then been vetted with groups of individuals who have a certain expertise. I will speak from a zoning perspective, as a couns, as a counselor who's been here and voted on many really critical zoning pieces, that there is a lot of work that we do with the planning depart, department on them. There is a natural place for the conversation to have with people who are experts in certain areas. I also have looked at how other communities, remember, we're not alone, so we're not the first community doing this and trying to tackle a very real issue that we're trying to address. Many of them have done them in different formats, and a lot of them have involved working with a group that has been formed like this. So, this is not unusual. What is unusual is the position we're in, in trying to solve and come up with something, given the timeline we have. So, I, I do think this is best practice. I like the transparency, and I like that we have it in this realm here. Every single counselor will be informed and known what's happening along the way, which is very different than other things and other groups that have been formed and worked on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to add, you know, we did have this conversation about how the zag is going to report out and how both residents, as well as council members, can expect reports out of the, the meetings. And Director Port was very clear, you know, that the, the way that the zag is going to meet is the Thursdays before we'll have the P and D meetings, and the intention is for Counselor Port to come to every P and D meeting and report out what's happened at that previous zag meeting. So, you know, we, we've all talked a lot about, you know, the, the need for, you know, moving this through quickly and, and how tight the timeline is, and Director Port, at least, you know, to my satisfaction, seemed to really understand that and understand the need for us to have a mechanism to understand what's happening in this zag. So, I would encourage everyone, if they want to have updates from this, to at least, you know, either call in or look at the recordings of the P and D meetings, because that would be the intention. And then the last thing I would add, because I specifically asked Director Port about it, was the timeline on, on the mapping, because, you know, as I said, the, the numbers and how many numbers we can get and the existing smart growth and how we would have to look at different maps to get to the numbers is, you know, the biggest piece of the puzzle, at least in my mind right now. And Director Port said that that was the intention to, to look at it at their next meeting, and then he would be reporting out those numbers very briefly thereafter. So, we should at very least expect those, those numbers in, in short order. So, we should at very least expect those numbers in short order. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Preston. I'm going to allow Director Port to speak. Who has his hand up?
Thank you, Council President. Just briefly, thank you for the councils who spoke just a second ago, and I thank you, Councils, you for your concern. I did actually just forward to the council some of the mapping options, and also an update relative to the zoning advisory committee and schedule. As Counsel Preston pointed out, and as Counsel Khan noted, the whole effort here is actually to coordinate very well with the city council, and to do that fully through the use of the planning development, through the whole meetings. And the scheduled meetings indicates with the planning board, the city council, some committee, and the zoning advisory group, a number of public meetings over the next couple of months in particular. And then there's a summary list provided as well. But the zoning advisory group meeting will be accessible to the public, it will be accessible via Zoom, but it will be working sessions without a public comment period, recognizing that the group has to do with work, and there will be opportunity at the public meetings to comment. So, as Counsel Preston pointed out, the idea is to, we'll give similar comparable information at each of the meetings going through, including specifically the planning development committee of the whole. And the upcoming meeting, I suspect next Tuesday, will be focused on the maps, the same as the zoning advisory group this weekend, to just send that information out today to the group and to you, as councilors, just a moment ago. And so, please take a moment to look at that, and I'm happy to further discuss the initial mapping assumptions with you in that context. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think the meeting's Thursday?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
4:30.
Yeah. Thank you. Further comments? Okay. Hearing none. The motion was to receive and file Communication 545. Roll call?
Roll call. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
No.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Grandis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
10-1, motion passes.
Thank you. Counselor Shan, anything else to report out of committee?
Yes, we did have the opportunity to go through ordinance 166, Specialized Energy Code with Molly Edinburgh and Mike Strauss, and our partners, Maral. We had a really good conversation. We did opt to keep it in committee, gives councilors another opportunity to ask questions. We are going to bring it up again next week, with the expectation of having a couple of developers come, and a member from the state who would also be speaking on the energy code. So, if folks would like to send any questions, that would be great. I will get them out to Molly, so we have those ahead of us before next Tuesday's meeting. Other than that, that is it for planning development.
Okay. I will make one mention as a point of order, that stretch energy code, that is committee of the whole, that's how we approved it last week, so if, okay. So, yeah, so if ordinance 166 could also be, just labeled as a COTW.
Got it.
I don't have the approved minutes in front of me, but my handwritten blue ink scribbles do say that it was COTW when we referred it to committee.
I agree with you on that one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, and we will move on to Public Works and Safety. Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to approve Appointment 481.
Second.
David Vance is a retired Merrimack police officer. He is applying for the position of special police officer here in Newburyport. He comes with a recommendation from the marshal as well. The special police officer would do some ad hoc things as needed along the way, a lot of details, some private events, things like that. It does lighten the load from our existing staff, and we are still two heads down going forward, so this is a real positive development. The committee voted 3 to 0 to approve him.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Grandis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Order 545, the crosswalk on Turkey Hill and Hale.
Second.
During the committee meeting, we talked about the location of this crosswalk. It comes along Hale Street. It, if you're familiar where Hale Street meets Turkey Hill, is kind of a common area. The crosswalk, the sidewalk actually blends in through it, doesn't stick to the edge of the road, and goes through the middle of this crosswalk. It comes out where a curb cut was placed. Directly across the street from it is a curb cut, and it is the only side with a sidewalk on it all the way up the street. So, at one point, there was a sidewalk, there was a crosswalk there, but it was lost when we repaved Turkey Hill and took out the median, et cetera, along the way. I sat with Director Amaral. He sat there for an hour. I sat with him for half an hour while we observed traffic, traffic patterns, location of what would be here. I could go through the 14 points that were submitted to us, and we had addressed all of them. We have an intersection that isn't square with four right angles. We have an intersection that has one right angle. Then we have the extension of Turkey Hill, which is another 60 feet away off the intersection. And then we have Plumber Spring while it's closed, which is another item we'll talk about, is another 25 feet off the intersection as well. The location of the potential crosswalk here that we're asking for has good sightlines. It, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour citywide. It only has one single lane of traffic on both sides of the street, so there, nobody would be cutting to the left or cutting to the right along the way. I did mention the sightlines, and I did mention that there is only a sidewalk on one side of the street. So, anyone walking, let's say, from La Valley down through the sidewalk along Hale, would come to a certain point in the street and not be able to go any further without being able to cross the street. We did observe several people and bikes in the middle of the street, simply because there's no crosswalk along the way, and it was a little bit of chaos. And it was from a comment and recommendation from the DPS director, who is a traffic engineer, that we could put the crosswalk down and observe it through the year, this year, prior to putting down a more permanent type of crosswalk going forward. So, the ask from the committee was that it was recommended 3 to 0. The ask is that we approve this crosswalk. Thank you.
Any discussion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you so much, Council President. I just had a couple of follow-ups on, you know, this comes up a lot, because there is a place that used to have a crosswalk on Federal Street by the tannery that connected to the, where Brown Sugar is, and many people have asked me about, you know, how do I get that back? So, more from a procedural perspective, like, I am curious, we used to, and I think we still have like a listing of all the crosswalks, because our ordinance, you know, that is done here in our realm. My question on the criteria or the process would be a little bit better to understand. Is it DPS, something like holistically, are they looking at the city? Because my understanding from the report is that this is almost seen as a, and I don't mean to like paraphrase incorrectly, but it's not permanent, it's to kind of see how it's going to work, is what I think the last piece that confused me. So, I'd like to understand two things. One is, it probably did not come from Director Port, the request, it's probably from a need in the city, one thing. The second thing then is, what would be the way on making something like that permanent, and then could be applied in a policy for the whole city, if that's helpful? And I don't mean to put the counselor, ward counselor, the chair of the committee, I hope these are answerable, but if not, it's just something that'd help me understand.
Yeah, we'll answer.
Thank you.
So, let me take the last one first about the temporary scenario. This is temporary paint. So, it would be temporary paint. Crosswalks have a certain glazed paint that needs to go down on the road. That's a little bit more expensive along the way. So, the thought process is we would put down visible paint this year, and see how this works out, see if it relieves the concerns from the neighbors and the neighborhood, and then put it on a regular crosswalk painting list, so it'd just be updated with the correct painting going forward. That's the first part of that. Typically, so typically when we talk about Water Street, things like that, first of all, I want to commend the DPS director and his deputy. They have gone through personally and validated every one of the crosswalks that were on the list, and they are now maintaining an ongoing list of crosswalks going forward. They did this before ours, they spent their own time doing it to be able to collect this information. So, they have a very good idea of what's out there or not. So, for example, there, on the Water Street side, they'll say, the curb on one side isn't cut properly, so therefore they took the crosswalk away. They, this DPS administration did not, but a previous one had. So, to get it back in there, it would be a simple petition that comes in, gets reviewed, usually by TSAC, then comes to PWS for review. Part of that review is to have DPS come in, give us an estimate as to what it would take, both in work effort, resources, as well as funding, to be able to do that. And then we would make a recommendation to the full city council, knowing that if we put in a crosswalk, there would be an expense for that. For example, we had, we had approved a crosswalk on Inn Street, which is still pending, but that came with a $25,000 budget item that needed to be included in the road and sidewalk plan, that we just haven't been able to fit in there. Same thing with High Street and Myrtle, which we talk about in front of olives. There's a pending grant for that, and we're trying to fit it all in to the appropriate budget number along the way, working alongside DPS to do that. In this particular case, there's zero cost to us at all. That's why the temporary paint, we'll put it on the permanent paint, which will have an expense to it going forward. Again, this came from several residents concerned that there are increased speeds, as we know, on a lot of our streets, and they're now trying to walk, get out and walk, and there's only a sidewalk on one side of the street, and then they get to this certain point. And in many ways, it's good, it's off the intersection itself, because the intersection, if you've been there, is somewhat crazy. Again, you've got a four-way stop sign, and we all know how people don't always stop at the four-way stop sign, so this actually gives quite a bit of sightline for anyone lucky enough to be in a potential crosswalk going forward along the way. I hope I answered your questions, I might have missed one or two, but.
That was good. Thank you.
Okay. Got it.
Counsel Harmon?
Generally, I would, full-throated support for crosswalks. There was a death of a child in Boston yesterday. We've had a recent issue here in Newburyport, the loss of Reverend Margita. Given the public comment earlier, and while I appreciate the Ward Five Counselor's background on the committee discussion and the work that went into this with Director Amaral, and understanding that Director Amaral has the expertise in traffic safety, it gives me pause for us to be potentially dictating the location of a crosswalk, while an hour of observation is, you know, valuable and appreciated. I just want to make sure that we are not rushing, and that we are doing our diligence in terms of studying the safety. I'm familiar with this intersection and the awkward corners, and while I think there, an argument can be made for the visibility, an argument can also be made for it not being four right angles, and the driver potentially, you know, coming through that turn and having the crosswalk being set back, hypothetically could also be an issue for the pedestrian not being able to see that car approaching, et cetera. So, I'm not, I'm not saying I won't support this, but I do, I do have some strong concerns, given what we've observed with pedestrian safety recently, and making sure that we're doing this with the proper inputs from the experts that we need.
Counsel Zede?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak about a couple of things. One is the role of the city council in these kinds of matters, because I think that that was sort of the heart of a question earlier, was process-related. The city council, we're it, we are the road commissioners. That's something that came up several times over the past couple of years. That's how it works. TSAC, for example, is an advisory body. It's one of, another one of those committees that doesn't have an exact legal home, because it was never formally established, but it doesn't have any voting powers anyways, but TSAC is an important thing, in the sense that it provides an outlet for some of those. You usually have the marshal, for example, and you have the fire chief, and you have the director of DPS and so forth. So, the city council owns the public way. That's been the topic of conversation for many years here, whether it's permitting a concert to crosswalks, to vetting out roadway plans, et cetera. I just want to say that, yes, we don't all come here today with traffic safety engineering backgrounds, and tomorrow, degrees in finance, and the next day after that, some degree in something else, but we have an important role, and part of that is to vet out what it is that's presented to us. So, that's number one. Number two is, I honestly can't say that I understood the argument that mid-block crosswalks, I mean, the majority, I mean, in my ward, there are mid-block crosswalks, that's a normal thing, we see those all the time, and they're done because, I mean, in my ward, I don't really have any traffic controls, by way of example. Ward Five, where this is located, doesn't have traffic controls for the most part, except on major roads like a Low Street meeting at Story Ave. So, if you can't put a crosswalk where it's not a traffic controlled, you'd have no crosswalks in Ward One by, so I didn't understand that argument. Number two is, we did ask the expert, and number three is, this had a crosswalk before, and frankly, should have never come to this. If the crosswalk existed before the road was repaved, it should have been placed back where it was. That's usually why they put the curb cuts back in. So, it's illogical to have to recreate the wheel just because you repaved a street. And so, I'm sure that in the future, I hope, when something is repaved, it's put back the way that it was, and if there was a crosswalk there, then it should be replaced. So, I don't quite understand that in the first place. And then the last thing I want to say is, as a fellow ward counselor, having, I've been involved in a million of these, and many of us are ward counselors or have been ward counselors in the past, this is how it's done in a small city, is you have a combination of neighbors giving you their observations, which are very valuable, and because they live there, they see it all the time. You have a combination of your DPS director. We now have the added benefit over the last several years of a TSAC-type group, official or unofficial, providing you its input. You have a Public Works and Safety Committee that then further vets it, and we're the last, the buck stops here. You get to have a look at it and take a look at it and make sense. To me, I'm looking at it and saying, it was already there before, the curb cuts exist, I've driven that, I've biked that a million times myself, it makes a lot of sense that people would want to cross. Asking for it to be traffic-controlled, to have a crosswalk, is illogical. We're not going to put a traffic light there, why would we? So, it passes the checks and balances for me, and so I'm happy to support putting back what was already there, and I want to urge my colleagues to do the same. What I want to urge my colleagues also to do is to not, you know, give up on the role of the council, you know, that this is what we do here, and everything we do, we have to become, fast study on it and learn it, and part of that is just how this process works. So, if the neighbors are saying that it's an unsafe place, that's a very important place to start, and then carrying on from there, this has gone actually through more process than other things have, and I urge the council to support it, because I think it'll make it safer.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none online, seeing none in person. Roll call?
Roll call on approving crosswalk 542. Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Dunio?
Yes.
Counselor Grandis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
11. Motion passes.
Counsel? Thank you. Counsel President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file Communication 539, the MVRTA route change.
Second.
Seconded.
So, we had both the Chief of Staff, as well as Noah Berger from Meva, attend our meeting, and what they had let us know was that this route change has been brewing for maybe six to nine months or so along the way. They've polled several residents, specifically those on Oakland Street, that forced a number of evaluations that happened. What happened there is that they thought that a certain spot named on Merrimack Street, namely the toll building, was of more importance than it was. After some study and review and numbers, they concluded that they wanted to redraw the number 19 route. It'll happen as of August, excuse me, April 8 along the way. And for those concerned, ridership is up 60% over pre-pandemic levels, but that's over the whole system, not necessarily just Dubryport. They wanted to listen, they wanted to make a note that they've been listening to the riders, especially to those at the Heritage House along the way, and one of the important things is they now have a timed system, so that when you come to Amesbury, into the Amesbury Center to connect to the 19 bus, that it should be timed, and you should have a regular schedule to be able to go forward. Is this the final?[1759.76] No, it's not probably the final, and it will continue to grow and evolve. For example, one of the big things that they did was change the location and entrance to the hospital, which was a bone of contention for many. They were dropping people off at the official, the old official entrance to the hospital, which is closed, and people had to walk around the hospital to get into the new official entrance to the hospital. Through some working with the hospital staff as well, they're going to make some changes and adjustments to the roadway, and therefore, the bus will be able to actually cut through, go to the back of the, come up and go to the back, which is now the front of the hospital, to be able to drop people off and continue on its way along the way. The map is officially in our packet. It's also officially posted on the website as well. One of the other items of great help here was that the director, Noah Berger, wanted to stress that there's a mini-MIVA, if you will, along the way, and those links are included in the packet. It's also on the website as well. And that allows people who need door-to-door service, customization, they can do it online, they can do it via phone, and they can pre-arrange things two days, one day in advance, depending on their situation going forward. I think it's a nice way to be able to supplement some of the things that might need to happen, a doctor's appointment, et cetera, that might be a little bit more stressful than trying to catch a bus and ride a bus, et cetera, along the way. So, regardless, MIVA's going forward. It's going to stay fair, free through the end of this year anyway. They would like to maybe come back and propose some signs, like lollipop signs, and say the bus will stop here. In Amesbury, they've actually committed to a couple of shelters along the way. That might be a big step for us, but maybe a sign or two might help us, as long as we can convince Jim McCarthy that it's okay to put it on the streets. But other than that, the committee voted three to zero to receive and file. We were very encouraged that the residents were listened to, and we hope that ridership within the city itself increases proportionally. Thank you.
Thank you. So, motion made and seconded to receive and file. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zede?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
Yes.
Counsel Harman?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
And Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Counsel President, I want, with your patience, I'd like to expound a little bit on a couple of items that we talked about, we left in committee. It's part of the committee report, if you will, more than anything else. There's item Communication 544, which is an email from resident Laurie O'Donnell for flooding on Mark One Avenue. She's at 29, also resident Scott Sullivan at 27, and Jake Broussard at 22, Mark One. What they came, what they gave to us in our communication, which we do have pictures of, is a situation that's brewing over there in that the catch basins are clogged. They're not clogged at the catch basin, they're clogged underneath. And what has been determined is that the catch basins drained into a common drain and then went into an easement that went through, over private property along the way, bless you. But there was private development, and the easement is no longer there, and the drain is now blocked up. So, it can handle a little bit of rain and pass through, but we've had some significant rains this past summer. We've had significant flooding across the road. As everything matures, as developments mature, what happens is, some of the drains that are naturally built from the front of the house to drain to the back of the house, and then drain down, are altered through fences and trees and clogged-up swales and things like that, creating a force of water that now comes down from neighboring streets along the way, crosses Mark One, and floods these people's basements, which never happened in the 20 years that they've been there. So, we left it in committee at the urging of the Ward Six counselor, because he's looking for more information, and I think he's right on this, and the committee agreed as well. Director Amaral was there as well. He talked about the things that we're doing. The neighbors are looking for a short-term, a medium-term, and a long-term type of solution. A short-term solution was in heavy rain. DPS actually went down and pumped out the water out of their backyards, which they sloshed through, they pumped out the water across the street, so that it wouldn't infiltrate into their basements along the way. But these residents are now in a situation where they've had flooding in their basements, and now they're not sure when they can repair it, simply because there's more rain coming, and there was rain this past weekend, et cetera, along the way, and so, nobody's really happy. And so, why do I bring this up, and why do I bring it to your attention? Because in a passing comment made by DPS was that, "Well, listen, we don't have any schematics, because it's so, the development is so old, so we're not really too sure. We're going to have to camera it. We're going to have to come up with a solution to try to reconnect those catch basins to the city drain along the way and get that water out." And for those of us who can remember, this is how Phillips Drive started, and we have a potential here that... ..................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
And I would like to explain for the folks in the room and those listening online, because I have to rely on speech to text to get the same information that my colleagues sitting around me get on their computers and their laptops, it would be incredibly intrusive and abrupt and disruptive to have that audible for the room. So while the optics may be questionable that I could be communicating during a meeting or something to that effect, in order to do that, I would actually have to speak into my microphone. So to assure anyone who may have had that thought cross their mind, it would literally be impossible to communicate during a meeting with my technology without being incredibly obvious to the room because I'd be talking. So that being said, if I need to reference a note that I've made in my phone for something that I'm going to say, I have to hear it in the same way that you folks all get to look at your screens and read your notes. So I just wanted to make that clear. There is absolutely nothing abnormal about a person who relies on speech to text to have to also therefore rely on a Bluetooth earpiece pretty much being glued to your ear. So for what it's worth, I hope that eases any concerns anyone may have had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other good of the order, Counselor Zede?
Just a slightly different thing. Just was hoping that the clerk could help remind applicants for events in the past, particularly for the summer, that they should really apply soon because we've been jammed up quite a bit on emergencies and so forth trying to get events going. So if you want to have a block party, if you want to have a used closed state street, if you want to have a big concert, like any of those things in the summer, I would just say, you know, if we could leverage any email lists we have to remind folks that they could apply anytime. It would probably save some friction in the future on the floor here if we didn't have to like do that in emergencies and so forth to get those things done, especially from larger event holders that do them every year. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Lane, did you want to add something or is that your hand from earlier?
No.
Well, nice to see you waving.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Roll call. Counselor Preston.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Greenwich.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor President Cameron.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
Good night. You.[297.91]